Okay, everybody's back. Why don't we get started? So we're all the way down to 5.1 Crack Ceiling Tender, issue from the airport manager. Go ahead, Mr. Graham.
So the synopsis here is she wants to move ahead on this project, get the tender out a little bit earlier in hopes of getting this done this year. It was based on the review by Transport Canada. They want to see this get done this year. Yeah, it's, she has an amount in the budget there. She just wants the approval to go ahead.
Didn't we approve this last year?
Painting.
Oh, painting.
I know they blur together and the glosses are similar.
I actually thought it was Crack Ceiling.
We did do a Crack Ceiling, I don't know if it was last year or the year before as well, that got done. So this is more of this. But there is a painting project as well we had been waiting to get.
Yeah, they showed us to them and said that it would be next.
They have money in the budget?
They have their own reserve and it has enough.
So this is just a formality? Let's get her on. Recycling Center, Council Rep. Shall we have Bill? You're on there now? Oh, I'm sorry, Chad, you're on there now? And it needs two council reps?
Yeah. I'll go back on it.
You want to go back?
I'll go back.
Okay. Everybody's good with that? Bill's going back?
How many committees do you have?
Actually, two, three. Like, I don't have a whole lot.
Who are you on? You're on, so you're on.
She started there.
She'll beat me.
Yeah, okay.
The road one, but it's not really this.
Councilman.
In councilman? Not a whole lot.
Okay, so this is, what's about, this is March, right? So April, May, June, July, August, September, October, we reappoint and reschedule community appointments.
It looks like the Secretary takes the summer off, huh?
Yeah, a lot of communities do. Okay, we're good. AMM Workshop, Council Forester.
Sorry, I'm still catching up. One of the reasons I want to take a workshop. Okay, great. I'd like to attend the Soft Skills for Tough Cookies workshop. It's the day before the AMM meetings in Brandon that we're going to already. I think it would help for me as a counselor for the town in dealing with a lot of the stuff and the people that we deal with on a regular basis. I've never experienced what I'm doing this year ever in my life, and I think it would benefit the community as well as myself a great deal to learn as much as I possibly can about something like this and in dealing with all the other counselors and committees and organizations. So I'm asking that it be approved that I can go to it and apparently there is an expense to it. There's a hundred dollars for the workshop as well as the additional hotel and apparently indemnities.
A discussion.
In reading this, it says identify the 12 types of tough cookie managers. So is this geared more towards managers over counselors? Does anybody know? And if so, if it's more for managers, then I'm not really sure it's something that we need to take. Another question I have is in terms of is it offered through Skype or Zoom or are any of these offered that way? Any of these at all through AMM? Do we know?
Somebody check over, I guess.
Because for a hundred dollars for the fee and that hotel and the indemnity, I can't pronounce it. What does that come to? Four hundred dollars for a three-hour course?
It's all three hours.
It's a three-hour course?
Yeah, it said for, well, there's two different times that you could take it. You could take it from noon till three, I think, or three till six. I just don't know.
Oh, yeah. Nine till noon or one till four.
Or nine till four. Just find that it's a high price for three hours if it's including all the extras. If it was just a hundred dollars for the course. But that's kind of my two cents. I just don't know if this is for managers or for counselors. If it's called like Soft Skills for Tough Cookies.
I believe it's kind of altered.
So do we have money in the budget for council training? Would we be within budget if we went?
We would.
Be within budget?
For just, just for Larry?
For Larry, yeah. So is council in favor of Larry attending, not in favor of attending? Nay, nay.
Can you check with AMM or have Jim when she comes back to see if these courses are online?
Well, it looks like it's an actual, like a reputable training program. I don't think it would hurt to have somebody attend if they're interested in attending. And I mean, it's, it's pretty inexpensive. It'd be nice to get other managers or whatever involved in that. I know we have, you know, we've also put on the, on the table already, and I don't know where it's going about training. I did suggest four or five courses as well for council and administration staff. So I guess I could put forward a resolution on that next time as well.
It's in the budget discussion. So, yes?
I am looking.
Yeah, okay. Carrie?
I don't know if it's a, if it's a, by reading this, it doesn't tell me if this is something for managers or something for counselors.
I think it's for everybody, I'm curious. Yeah, I looked up, I went, I actually looked it up. I just Googled it a few minutes ago.
I looked it up at home on the weekend. Are you finding something different than I found?
No, it just says that it's the type, 12 type of managers whose districts and maybe extreme stats. So it's just trying to understand your management style and do some self-reflection.
Trevor?
Sure.
Trevor's yes.
We got the budget.
Chad?
Yeah, no, I'm fine. As long as it's, there's, there's some value to it. And if, and if there is any materials that do come out of it, that be shared with the rest of council. Yeah, if it can benefit everybody, you know what I mean, it'd be good.
Bill? Larry, I'm sure you're yes. So a resolution to come to council? Authorizing. Authorizing Larry to go. Okay, Bill, Gateway, Keweenaw and Corridor.
Quite a long time ago, I was approached by Gateway, Keweenaw and Corridor to see if we would host, if the Town of the Paw would host the Annual General Meeting. And I said I would bring it forward to council. And so I did some research and hauled around and it's about 50, it's about 50 people that will be here talking with, about Highway 283. So I phoned around and I phoned Keweenaw Act and I phoned Wascana and I phoned Burshides and I phoned Art Barbo to rent different places. And it looks like the cost is going to be between $1,200 and $1,500 to put this on. And it's going to be just a soup and sandwich type thing, dessert and coffee. Having said that and finding out that the Mayor's Hospitality Fund is only $2,500, I didn't want to use it all up. So that this time also, I would like to ask you fellows and girls permission to bump the Mayor's Hospitality Fund up to $10,000. Because in the next year or so, we're going to have people coming in for housing, whatever. And I think we should show them that we're hosts. So that's my thing. It's up to you, gentlemen, please.
Thoughts?
Does that fit with that DMC?
Nope.
Why?
Because the DMC wouldn't, it's not a tourism thing, right? This is the Town of the Paw is doing something specifically to host visiting dignitaries. So you could make application to the DMC fund, but I've got my doubts.
But isn't it, I mean, if we don't host it, doesn't it meet the beds and, or heads and beds criteria? Bringing more people to the community and?
I guess the Town of the Paw would make an application to the DMC fund and the board would review it. Okay, so we get some visiting dignitaries in town every now and then, and Bill would like to increase the budget from $2,500 to $10,000 on an annual basis. What's the consensus?
I agree with that.
I agree with it too.
I mean, obviously, there are recent financial approvals prior to spending $10,000 on an event.
If the other question is whether you want to host the AGM or not? Because I think that's just a question.
It's your question.
There's two questions. First one.
There's two issues in here.
On the same sheet?
The first, yeah, the first question is the Gateway, Keweenaw and Corridor. Host the gates. And I slipped in the second question.
We've never hosted it before. It's always been a mixed one, right?
I think it's been at the Keweenaw Act in the past. I think when Lonnie, Lonnie Carpe, yeah.
Okay, so previous to the town's involvement, I guess.
Because he would, he's reported back to us for the last 14 years prior to his departure. I feel like.
It's open to the public?
Not yet. As far as I know, it's the Annual General Meeting. Yes, it's open.
Yeah, I'd increase the volume too.
So there would be two resolutions come forward?
Sure.
Two resolutions?
I guess so.
Well, you would have really need a resolution on that.
On the first one, you were.
Well, the budget, we can deal with in the budget.
Deal with that in the budget?
Let's go.
Okay. And so the resolution just to host the meeting?
Host and then whether or not you want to give the money. I don't know if that was an option, if it was hosting and the money came, I'm not sure about.
Well, you've got approximately cost 12 to 15 hundred.
12 to 15 hundred to host the Annual Convention.
Same question.
Yeah.
Let's just set up those two.
So at, at this time too, do we need to set a set amount for that or we can go off approximately?
We can say, we can say up to $2,000.
To a max of?
Or whatever, yeah.
Yeah, not to exceed.
Oh, and the, it's going to go on April 21st.
That's pretty quick.
So soon as I go into better, so that's all.
Well, I think the consensus is that we're moving forward with it.
I will let them know tomorrow and they will be here every half.
Okay. Rescheduling of the April meeting.
She has an issue sheet in here. I guess the April 13th is Easter Monday and the town is typically closed. And she notes the procedures by law, the meeting is typically on April 14th. However, the mayor and three counselors are away, attending a seminar in Brandon, and she would like to reschedule for the 6th.
Good. Okay, resolution coming forward. All right, Counselor Ward, Tri Council.
It's just that Tri Council's been dropped for a number of months now. Like, it's prior to, I guess the last meeting was kind of back at Smart Cities, was it? Tri Council. Right back then anyway.
It's been a while since.
Anyway, I have a feeling that it would be good to try and get it back up and running again to reestablish between the town, the RM and OCN to deal with issues that have a concern with our region. And just like to see the meetings to be started again, that's all.
So you're suggesting that we get staff, get the staff to send a letter to try to establish a Tri Council meeting?
Right. What are you envisioning, like a mayor and council, a council, a small, as many people as want to go? The whole council wants to go and each council, each place wants to go and look in the past.
Yeah, that's what we've got. We've had, it was open to all elected officials and then even, yeah, some managers. Yeah, so they were pretty big meetings. We've, they've been held upstairs, like in the old KRC side. They've been held at Keweenaw Act. Yeah.
Or is why, with so many people?
It's tough to get stuff done, yeah. It's really, it's high level stuff that, and then not, it's kind of setting where I guess the respective councils would like to see things going and they kind of appoint people to spearhead, like a committee?
Sorry, only reason I'm asking, rather than sending a letter, like just a broad letter and then they assuming that it would be like before, if the groups are too big and it was really not functioning in terms of getting, is it better not to suggest, hey, why don't we have a mayor and a counselor to, and a staff? Or I'm just throwing things out there rather than having it open to everybody and then it's just, hey, how's it going? And then.
Well, the one, well, the two that I attended were very poorly attended. There's only one or two people from each group. But that was that kind of the end of Smart Cities and it was, everything was kind of ending. There was, mine was there, you weren't there at that one. There was Jim Burshide, Ron Burshweke, Jennifer Flatt. Another guy from across. No, no. Something to do in education or something.
So is there any, so you, and Trevor's got a good point, like a large meeting with, you know, potentially 30 people, it'd be very difficult to get anything done.
Yeah.
Have you got any sort of topic in mind that you'd like to bring up at a Tri Council meeting? Or you just want to meet and greet?
Well, I guess meet and greet, but to start.
Is there a premise for the Tri Council?
It's just regional stuff as much before, right?
It's working well.
I think one of the things, and we kind of went through this with the RHJ and everything else. And there's an, there's an indication that the meth crisis is getting bigger in all three centers and everything else. We can't as a council deal with it and OCN can't deal with it and the RM can't deal with it. I don't know if the Tri Council can deal with it. It's situations like that that it would be nice to see that we could formulate something to deal with issues with that concern, all three.
Yeah, if we wanted to nail the head on one specific thing, we could just say healthcare. The region and healthcare within the region. And we can, we could set the agenda to discuss other things at that time, but.
I know, just to repeat myself, but just the advantage of meeting and having, suggesting a small group is that when you don't know somebody else, and I go with 10 people, I probably talk to them.
10 people.
But when it's three or four people on, you know, my group, but it's three or four. So then you start to kind of get, you know, stuff flowing and ideas because you trust. Now I get to know you a little bit, they know who I am. So I would just suggest, I have no idea, it is a great, it is a great idea. I just think that we kind of limit it to two or three people and then they can report back to council. And I think that would be a better working group than.
Could very, could very well be, Trevor, yeah.
Yeah, I agree. Let's, let's send that letter.
So we'll send a letter to the RM and OCN indicating like a regional meeting with the three organizations.
Yeah, but, but we should be clear in saying that, you know, you know, two.
Try to reestablish the Tri Council.
Yeah, try to reestablish the Tri Council and send two members.
I think it needs to be clear that the meeting with OCN, it needs to be with elected officials, not with staff.
Yeah, and I think that's what Trevor was trying to say.
Okay. Budget discussion.
Graham's here. So we had that lovely meeting last week. A lot of ideas were put on the table. And I summarized them up here. So I made some changes to the budget as per our discussion, some of the things I took as the direction of council. Anything, I just wanted to get kind of firm yes or no's on, there's a list. So obviously, I want you guys to be in favor of all the grants we have listed. And if there's anything you feel is missing, this is the time to get it on there. Same thing with the capital, so. Okay. I'm going to mingle through whatever's on after right away. There was a staffing portion in camera afterwards as well.
For the increase in general council training to 10,000, note individual counselors also have training slash travel budgets. So that's not like $10,000 per counselor for training? Would that be for everyone excluding the mayor?
So this 10,000 is just a generic council training? Yeah.
Well, I just gave the list.
But I just. Then you could approve whatever you want under that.
Yeah, no, I provided the list. I don't know what the costs are. It would be whatever it is, right? I didn't get a, I could do that, but.
And I'm just saying that you individually have your own amounts and this would just be a general pop for.
I wonder if we could, if we could just do a couple of things first. So let's, if we back up and get kind of a high level approach. So we had our meeting last week, right, and we all threw things out on the table. So you provided us with a new sheet here. Is this the impact if we did everything?
This is the impact of everything currently on the list other than the bylaw. Because I felt that direction was pretty straightforward.
The bylaw?
Yeah, I pulled the commissioners off, so that's not included here.
Okay.
If you want it back in, I will have to. The wellness is in there. The fire stuff is in there right now, so removing it would bring it down. All these additional amounts are now in there. Skate park, I have nothing listed right now. And then the additional budget amounts, those are all in there as well. So pretty much everything that we're talking about is, is in the budget as we're talking about it, so.
And we, we could do all of this with virtually no tax increase?
Correct. However, we still haven't got our ESL from the province.
What's that?
That's the education support levy.
Okay.
So I'm using last year's number. And KST gave me a reduced rate this year. They bumped down 2.3. And I'd asked her about it because I was expecting it to go up. And she said she was still waiting on some information, so I'm not sure if that will hold. So our, we actually see an increase this year, but because KST went down, it's kind of levels us off at that point. So if they go back up to what the expectation is, it'll go up again. So the overall number. So we are looking at an increase right now for the town side.
I'm sorry, Graham, what was that?
From the town side alone, we're looking at an increase, right? We're seeing, what is this, three, 2.2, 2 and 1/4 percent increase on the town side. Right, and we're, since KST is lower by 2.3 points, we only have a 2.1 bump up overall.
Overall.
To the taxpayers.
Right now.
Right now, as this stands.
Where are you seeing that, Graham? Like, what should you look at?
So if you look, you can see the KST is up, they're less, minus 2.3.
She did provide me those numbers, but I'm just not sure how certain it is right now.
So now our, I'm just trying to think our budget thing, because I don't think they're going to know until, like.
She said March 31st.
Okay.
It's their deadline.
So just, just, just in case that that's a misprint. It should be the other way around, 2.3.
Why would it be the other way? No, 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 it's based on the, like, it's based on page eight there, on the amount that they asked for. And it's, it's lower this year than it was last year. I think they asked for 3.2 million last year and it's 2.8 this year, so I was a little shocked, like I said. And then I asked immediately, is this correct? And she said, well. I hope it is. That's great.
When's the provincial budget out? Is it this week?
Next week?
I'm not sure.
It's shortly here, it's like, you know.
Usually we get that education support levy from the province about this time every year. That one doesn't change much historically, so.
So how much, how much does our budget change with the reduction in the provincial sales tax?
Our budget? We don't, we don't have a stake in the provincial sales. Our expenditures.
Our expenditures are going to actually decrease. They're going to decrease somewhat, but would it be?
I'd have to look at overall spending and some things are.
Like, it's not going to be any?
It's, you know.
1% of nothing.
No, with inflation, I mean, you're not, probably not gaining ground.
Any questions?
I'd just like to jump in about the skate park thing, using some of the CDI money. So I spoke to Jerome regarding, like, where the skate park's at and what, what some, what things are looking like to get it completed. And, and he said it's a very real possibility that, that if the town was to, to throw a stake into the skate park, that it could get done within, within a couple of years, construction starting, you know, as early as next year. And I, I asked him what those numbers kind of looked like. And he said that if the town was to, to put in $100,000 over a couple of years, that it could basically help to push it over the edge to get the skate park completed, so.
Each year or?
No, no, $50,000.
$50,000 per year?
$50,000.
Well, what would it take to actually just, if we wanted to build this year?
The number, well, the thing is, is he's got a lot of irons in the fire right now with, with some grant applications. But, you know, kind of the number that, that's been looked at is like 400, 4,000, 400, 450,000 to get it built. So whether or not, you know, depending on where some of those grants are, you know, they do have some money in the bank. They're waiting on some decisions from some service clubs within the community. And then there's a couple of grant applications that could have, like, pretty major impact on those dollars, so.
That's typically what would happen if you have one big stakeholder go in, then everybody follows.
And I think that's, I think that's kind of what, what's going to happen here. The dominos are going to fall and if we can, if we can jump in, we might be, you know, the one that, that pushes it over the edge. A lot of these grant applications that he's, that the skate park is, is looking at are paying. They, they have a checkbox for community involvement or community buy-in. And if they can check that box off saying that, yeah, they've, they've got support from the community, it just ranks them that much higher in, in terms of paying ground funding, so.
It'll ups it like 50 cents of the dollar, right?
Yeah, for sure.
So are you, are you suggesting we contribute 50 a year?
Yeah, I'd like to see that. I'd like to see 50 for this year and 50 for next year. And I think that, that we could probably get it built within, you know, I just, it'd be tough to say to get it done next year, but I think getting it done next year could be a distinct and real possibility, so. And if we, and if we throw some weight behind it, it just makes it that much more likely.
And you're suggesting from the bipolar money?
Yeah, I think that it's the CDI money, it's a good spot to pull that money from, for sure. You know, it's, it was, it was originally designated to help with, with recreation. And this is, this is more barrier-free recreation for the community. So I think it's a good spot for it to come from.
Thoughts?
I'm not sure if it fits within the use of distribution funds for the CDI.
No.
We could always beg for forgiveness later, I suppose.
No, I, I support Chad's thought there. How much is in there now? 250, I think, or something.
What's 250 for the year then?
107. 107, carried forward from last year and it's about 250 a year, yeah.
So if we committed 100, we wouldn't be touching really the 250 going forward?
Yeah, we'd be touching 100.
100. I think, I think, I would love to see it built. I would really love to see it built. I think it's great.
I agree. Well, they could do the community creep out of it too.
What do the other counselors think?
It's certainly, it's certainly an asset to the community. And, and the one that they have in favor of building is certainly a nice thing. If you go over and look at the old one, which is not very good, but I don't know if the same things are going to happen. I, I would think they wouldn't happen at anywhere that's compared to the old one. Only, no, I'm, I'm good with that, but location is one thing I'm not too sure about, but.
The only concern I got with it is, I think it's a great idea, but I, I don't think it changes some from time to time on all the criteria of projects, but just looking at some of the projects, if these may or may not qualify, I don't know, but like the ice plant for the arena, that's at 147,000. Our ball diamonds are, you know, okay, but they kind of need some work on them. We have other, other infrastructure, recreation wise, that, you know, we haven't really. Some of the playground stuff in some parks is fine. Others have been, like, taken apart because they've been holes in them. So that's why the only concern is if we're not taking care of what we already have, it's kind of tough to spend money on something new. We know that that's going to need some whatever work in 10 years or whatever to fix that, so. But I, I don't know what fits, like, you're even saying, we can ask and then ask for forgiveness after, so is a project that's going to qualify or? I don't know, or not, or, so. So, so while I'm saying the, the ice rink or the ice plant, does that even qualify? I don't know.
My gut tells me it will. Like, we, we used that money for the fiscal stabilization fund. If it, if it works for that, I think it'll work for the recreation needs. That's my gut.
I kind of alluded to this last time. I feel like their biggest thing is they want to be able to hang something up and say, we contributed to this. So I don't know if it's possible to just hand up the 100,000 as the last hundreds. You can say, project done, hang up the sign, because I'm sure Hydro would love to see that more, but that may not fit with.
But generally, if you, if you put the first 100 into it, to attract everybody to it and say, this is what we did for our community, it goes a long ways too, you know?
What do you think, Kerry? You're quiet.
I'm in favor of the skate park by all means. I can't necessarily make a decision in five minutes to spend $100,000.
You need seven minutes?
So I may, I may need a little bit more time. I don't know how, I don't know how we can commit $100,000 within five, a five-minute decision. There's a lot of other things that need to get done as well. I feel that if we have money that is carried over from last time, we can use part of it, but we don't have to use all of it. We don't have to use all of everything, all the time, all in one spot. There are a lot of other bills and probably a lot of other asks that may be coming up. And they may also be part of this, but I'm not opposed to the skate park in any way. I've attended meetings for it. I haven't recently, but I, I just can't commit to, yes, let's give them $100,000 today.
The, the nice thing about this money is it won't impact taxation. That's the, that's the really nice thing about it. Right, so when people talk about their high taxes, this is one of those things that it's, it's outside the box. So it doesn't, it doesn't impact taxation anyways.
Regardless?
Yep.
I guess that, that could be yes and no, right? Because if we can use it for anything, why would we just roll that all up and put it towards the goal?
Yeah, I think they'd say no on that one. We could try.
I know, that's what I'm saying. Let's see. You know what I mean, if we're going to use it for anything, then if we're all.
If we're understood, we can't use it for anything.
So I guess to clarify, you can't use it on other projects where there is already provincial or federal funding, so those big projects? It certainly could be used on other infrastructure projects on a smaller scale. You'd have to look at, line by line, which ones.
It would be stacking, right? Because that would just say, yeah.
So where you're getting bigger funds, typically it's not beneficial to do that.
So what other plans have we have for that money? No, but that's what I mean, like, we're just going through this. Everything else is covered, just something new. It's going to add something to our community. It's going to attract new people. It's, it's, you can talk about selling our people. Now you have a new skate park. You have a, a skate park. You have a swimming pool. You know, let's develop the community. And if there's something else that we want there instead of that, then let's bring the idea forward, like. And I agree with Trevor. I mean, we have infrastructure. We should be just fixing it. Like, budget the maintenance on it, and if we don't want to have a park, I've said it to the past council, just decommission a park then.
The, the discussion about the park, I'm not, I'm sorry, I'm not up to speed on which one we're talking about. So which ones need the most attention?
The one there on.
First street?
No, no, right at the top behind Bagshaw, there it was, that was the one where they took the.
Well, there is Terry Park.
Yeah, there was a great big wooden structure with a.
It's slide. Should I call it a diamond park now?
Yeah. Yeah. Anyway, anyway, at the top, I think it was here, last year, year before, there was a, there was a hole right at the top. So very top of the structure, there was a, that's where the hole was. So they, they, eventually, I guess, took it, took it down. And, and that's one of the ones where the equipment is in more of a dire, dire need being replaced. But then you've got the motory one, which got three or four new things, and you see people hanging off it, 10, 10:30. And so, yeah, and, and there's other ones that are, we've come of upgrades on Tremonton, but, but then Tremonton needs, needs some. I'm at the parks, like, in the summer a lot. And, I mean, just even the sand and the grass and the leveling and the swings and the drainage. Drainage and, like, it's, some of them are, again, some of them are really good, but some of them are just, so are pieces here and there.
We know that even if we approve it today and it goes into this year's budget, we know that there's a 50/50 chance it won't happen this year. Right? Just the way things are. So if you've identified a park like that that needs some attention, why don't we just make the decision to fix it? And if it takes us two cycles to get it done, at least we can say in a year from now or a little bit better, it shall be done. Right? And then we use some of the bipolar money this year and some of the bipolar money next year. Because again, I agree with you. If we have a park that's, needs to be fixed, it should be fixed.
I'm sure, and I think those were some of the things that were, at one point in time, Kelsey Rack had an inventory of what was that? And then I believe, maybe the buildings' amenities director at the time or.
There was a tenure.
They took it over or something, but anyway, I'm not sure where that is. But again, I'm not a park expert. I mean, I know a lot of the same stuff looks, I mean, easy to replace, but there's a, but not a lot.
The old T R C thing that Erica did before she left, the baseball diamonds being fixed up and all that. Like, there's, there's some of our stuff that has to be fixed too, like.
Oh, no, for sure, like, they're fencing them, the diamonds.
But if, it's like, if we have money this year to do this, and then we can do a plan of da-da-da-da, you know, like. Because likely, as you say, the skate park probably won't totally get off the ground this year, so.
And if we're talking hopes and dreams and using some of that CDI money or the bipolar money, I know there's been numerous discussions about putting lights up at one of the ball diamonds. You know, maybe this is the time where we partner with the baseball club and, so it, it won't be as much as building a new skate park. But maybe we partner with them and say, hey, we want to help you get that ball diamond lit.
Is this park complete or are they in need of a place for kids to change?
I think it's complete.
No, there's no building here for.
I think it's complete.
No, I understand there are teddies, but that's what I'm asking. Is that project completed or is that?
I believe still, I'd pick some stuff up, put some benches and that sort of thing, but I think that's as far as they're going.
No, I think.
No.
So it is complete?
We don't.
That's a good question.
My understanding is those things do not take other structures.
Yeah.
You just change in your car or come there.
I remember asking that question when there was a meeting last year and that's what we're getting.
There's a few minor things that I remember. They just got the sod down across the bank and it was facing the weather and whatever. Yeah, but they had benches planned, picnic tables.
And I think they're buying new.
Yes. Because they had moved a piece or two.
That's right. They had, they was a couple, so.
I guess the good thing is we're in the luxurious position of being able to have these discussions this year. Right? We want to, we all want to make our community better and we've got a little bit of money there to do it, but it's outside of taxation.
That's the most important.
Yeah.
That is.
Sorry, I'm going to go back to tax.
No.
Because the other thing for you guys to consider is because this is going to just be a pool of money, you don't necessarily need to decide to include this in the budget. This could be something that's passed by resolution later after you see presentations.
Right, because it doesn't affect taxation.
Because it doesn't have taxation.
That's a good point. Okay, so on the table is the 100 to help the skate park. I think we're kind of interested in that. We're discussing cleaning up the playgrounds and so forth.
Ballparks.
Ballparks. We don't have to make a decision at this moment because of what Graham had just said. But I think it's good that if we all think about that just a little bit more, because I think it's great. You know, I think it's great. As, as I said earlier this evening, you know, there's not much we can do about the street people problem. But if we can help turn around a kid before he heads down a certain path, that's money well spent. Other ideas, topics, discussions, points you guys could raise?
Was there any other questions? We'll stay on the capital. Is there any other questions about the capital I have listed there? Anything we're concerned about? The chiller, I did get some answers for you. I guess it's 29 years old. One of the concerns is although it looks good on the outside, but they only typically last 20 to 25 years and it's full of ammonia. And so the interior condition cannot be known unless you cut it open and you guide the update once through.
When you put that new chiller on, do you, well, those guys are, but do you, does the ammonia change too, or is that the whole?
I guess I would imagine that, that's if it all changes.
Yeah?
Well, he doesn't drain it regardless.
No, no, I'm wondering if you end up replacing the ammonia with something else, like a, I don't, probably not, but.
Yeah, I don't know.
A different.
Do they use like all now or do you?
Yeah, but you've got all your compressors and stuff.
Chris is out there. He's the one that provided the answers.
He told us not to ask him anything tonight, so. It was all matter of years, so.
Yelling?
Yeah.
Sweet.
Sweet.
I'm worried to hear you guys talk. Sound like an old bear up here. Tell us about your chiller.
It's cold. We had this though, yeah. So last round of checks in Korea, they wanted me to come down, check it out. I guess last year as well, I chatted with them too. And the two units that are kind of coming up to, to useful life right now is the chiller and the condenser. So the chiller is the unit that's inside, has two green tanks. You don't typically see it. It's completely sealed. It's fiberglass unit. Can't really get in there to fix anything. And that's where the ammonia and brine have a chance to do their little dance, change phases, do whatever. The unit outside, that's the condenser. That unit there has had some repairs done to it. If it does go down, there is the opportunity to repair it. You can get in there, check it and see what's going on. So I kind of switched our gears to the interior unit, the, the chiller. Does it have it?
Does it operate the curling rink and the, and the repack rink?
Our, our unit does both, yes. It does both at the same time now. Or one, or the other. We can separate them as well.
New unit, cheaper to run?
Not really going to have any hair in it, no. The, the piece that we're replacing, its function is basically just to allow the ammonia and the brine, the brine basically under the ice service. The ammonia is outside and in that building. That's the only place that they get to, not really meet, but meet in the unit, that's it, basically, to.
That's really it, yes.
Is there a modernized version of this that could change time?
I get where you guys are going with these questions. And if you're wanting to increase efficiency, this is, looking at this one little piece isn't really the, going to be the answer to that.
They have the big compressors of the morgues inside. That are the most power suckers.
Yeah, like, you're going to have to live the whole process if you're wanting to look at, you know, increase efficiency. Looking at just one item, it's kind of like looking at the light switch, you know? We change that light switch to a.
Never switch.
Oh, never switch, that's a terrible thing. My thing is, you see where I'm going from. It's, it has its purpose. I mean, we could, I, I could ask the question, but ammonia is a very effective chemical in the organ for this process, so whoever's sitting is impressed.
How good is the 175 for a number?
That's a very good ballpark.
It is?
They installed one up in Thompson for something around that price, so.
But the chiller has nothing, nothing bearing on the days we're open or closed. Like, the Prince of Dave chiller we have today, are you lessening the time used to keep it going over a period of time? Or would a newer one allow us to expand our ice time?
It would do neither.
Yeah.
It would do neither.
But is they, when they do their life, sorry, interrupt. When you do the life expectancy, do they take into account that the arena's not operating for six months a year?
Well, that's a good point that they brought up as well, is that the useful life is typically run 24/7. Now ours does shut off in the summertime, turn back on in the winter. Does that mean that you can get away with double the time, not necessarily?
Well, how does the, how does the wear of the unit, like, what is it? How does it wear out? Like, how does it become end of life?
Well, the corrosive nature of the brine itself.
And it's sitting in their own.
Sitting there. And the ammonia's sitting there as well. The mixture between morning and oil.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so typically what I was, the information I was given to by the rep was that the unit has a typical useful life of 20, 25 years. And we're sitting close around a 30-year. The one thing that does, not that it's, you know, some sort of cause for, for everyone to get excited about, but, I mean, ammonia, I don't know if everyone knows, is a pretty toxic chemical.
Yeah.
It's the whole reason why our guys at the plant need the tickets that they need and need to do the checks they do. And we operate that area. No one's allowed access as well if the unit is operational and no one's available to, to be in the building. Because, so because there's that higher, that I'm, I'm putting a higher safety component basically on this, on this piece, as, as I feel that there is, should there be an event where, you know, God forbid that there's a, there's a leak, there are the necessary safety precautions in place to, to protect the health and safety and environment. But it would mean that the operation would potentially cease and we would lose the ice. Should the chiller outside, a lot of chiller, sorry, the condenser that's outside malfunction or there's a piece on the bat that needs to be replaced, it's a little bit easier for Simcoe to come up here, you know, take a piece, not necessarily off the shelf.
Mechanical.
It's mechanical. It's a little easier to, to replace. Should the chiller go down, we're replacing the whole unit. We're doing some modifications to the building, trying to get it open and stuff. So it's not really something you want to be doing on emergencies, yeah, situations, so. It's good, yeah.
One other, Christopher, the rink, you had some leakages last year or a while. Everything's good now? Everything's fixed?
Everything's hell tight, yeah. No, yeah, no issues at this point.
Well, that's good. Cross fingers, not on wood. Just to make sure.
Is that, that fixed? If they said, is that a permit, what did they consider that to be a permit?
I'm sure it's still a permit.
Yeah, no, no, like what did they, when they, when they sold it to them, did they say it was a permit fixer mark?
Ah, you know, I'm not sure, I'd have to ask.
Because that's something where we would think of long in the long run, we only have a short period to repair that and, yeah. If you were gonna approve it.
I think it was marketed as, as a permit fix, but yeah, I, I agree, I don't know.
If we approved this, would it be installed this year?
Well, from what I found in our reserves, I, we would have to find some extra money in order to do it. So.
Why would not maybe?
Because the reserve for the, there would, there would, well, the money to replace that is, I guess not, sorry.
Have it slated out of the machinery and replacement reserve?
Oh, sorry.
But, I mean, this, there's no money in the arena, we're going to have to cover this.
Okay, assuming we had the money.
Assuming we have.
Could, could it be done this year or would it take a little while?
I would have to get back to that answer. I think, I haven't questioned Simcoe on whether or not that could happen. I can't see there being issue if we started early, but I definitely want to ask them before giving you a concrete answer.
And does it have to be when the rink is closed? So like summer?
I, it would be best to do in the summer when everything's shut down for sure. Because if you did in the winter, you'd be disrupting the, the service. So yes, definitely, it'd be better to do in the summer.
So we're asking, a proven plan would be next summer, twenty twenty-one?
We're still in the winter right now, still in operation, so that would probably be the, would be a very good window there.
Why would you not do it this year? Like, why, why wouldn't you just, I mean, unless it's got some crazy long delivery, why, why not?
You could do it. That'd be a discussion with Simcoe, to see what their timeline, what projects they have.
Yeah.
By the time we get a tender prepared and get a tender, a budget is approved, and so there's a lot of factors that we want to. We can get back to you with a more concrete answer on that for sure.
Yeah. I'd rather get back to you guys on the concrete answer, exactly when they would be able to do it. Yeah, I apologize, I don't really exactly have that data for me right now.
And you can have that to us by?
For next council, before the end of the week, if you'd like an email, who else emails you? Soon, Simcoe's.
As soon as you're ready, respond.
Yeah.
Yeah.
As soon as.
Yeah, send us, send us.
Sure.
Okay, any other questions on that topic on that, the chiller? Moses, carry on, with your capital.
Is there anything else? Everyone's had a chance to look at the capital. Is there anything else that you want to talk about?
Security cameras, that was for in here, right?
That was for in this building, yeah.
So, and then infrastructure for asphalt, we met the tender going out on that anyway.
Yeah.
If you approved to make.
Yeah.
So some of these, like the areas like the airport with the whole, do they talk, like, will they be getting, I mean, I can't, can't control which company gets it obviously, but is there a way that, are they gonna talk, like paving the section in the airport, should even work? Be done there, is that, do they talk to the people that are gonna go out there to get some of the stuff? Because I'm just thinking on, not necessarily in capital, but in paving for infrastructure there, they'll have like fifty or sixty thousand allocated for paving. Do those guys talk to those guys or is that a separate?
We could just throw that into our tender and see if it's plausible, I guess, since that one will probably go first.
Yeah, those kind of, if we can keep, get as many things done as possible by the same.
I think, I think the wording is she, I don't know that it is important to have such a high quality product out there. I think what she was talking about was she wanted a paved section between one of the hangars and the main runway. And for some reason, I think it was only supposed to be a temporary measure, but they needed it to accommodate the, one of their clients, so. I'm trying to remember the details.
Thirty thousand dollars for a JV much, it's like, just don't wear driveway.
Well, it's a fix.
It is.
Anything out there is.
Yeah, let's look at the pavement condition consulting, like who's got, who does that? Like, is that a paving company that does it? Thirty for the, the crack ceiling, thirty so you get the sixty, it's just, and not so much if it's poked onto the guys that do some of the work that we have, but the big stuff, a lot of the small stuff. Rather than having our, our guys go around the asphalt recycler, taking, you know, well, obviously it's a little more efficient with this other company to go.
Some of us, some of them are, are kept separate for a reason, so the consulting, you want to keep separate from the tender for obvious reasons. I mean, you don't want the guy selling you something to tell you what you need. You want someone else to come in and work it out for you first, he has no vested interest in lying to you, so.
But basically, you mean this, like the airport comes out of the airport reserve?
Airport comes out of the airport reserve, historically, it's been funded through airport operations.
Right.
Now, again, they, they do have a fair chunk of change in there, but I don't know what the future holds for that airport. I know that a runway will eventually have to be completely resurfaced, that's going to be a big buck. I don't know what kind of condition the terminal is, I remember, I've seen it, I've seen it, I don't know what that will result in. I know they've talked about funding from their, from ACAP or whatever. A lot of unknowns.
And I think that's where this, the paving.
I think she tries to.
Yeah.
I think she tries to do the least amount possible to kind of keep us above board with TransCanada and everybody else, keep the clients coming.
And get us into that too, for that ACAP.
So they haven't typically had a lot of heavy duty demands and some of the ones they're asking for, like the big parking machine should turn around and be for themselves ideally, right? And solve another problem as well. Time will tell on the fuel sales, whether that's going to be a, a long term or.
Now, that fluctuates so bad with the seasons.
Any other questions?
I did add the drafting printer replacement on there since the last time you guys saw it. They did price it out, ours is complete and they use it extensively for plans and planning. I asked the question if we could just get John Morton to print us stuff and they said no, so, yeah.
So, okay, like, just, just for example, this single axle dump truck, two hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars, that's the one that we purchased and we're going to pay for already, right?
Correct, that one's already done, they're building it, when it comes, they'll want their money. The backhoe is already done, it's been delivered.
Yeah.
It was done in twenty twenty though. So we've already cut that check.
So, arena chiller. SW, SW, solid waste disposal grounds, expansion feasibility, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Yes, we talked about that a little bit last week, that'll come out of the waste disposal reserve.
Okay.
Ideally, I mean, we're at end of life, so either this new dump opens and we have a part of it, or we need to start considering our options. You know, having them come in and perform a feasibility is probably good and they could probably touch on how we're going to kind of shut it down. I know we did have them come in in two thousand, I'm gonna say thirteen.
Move us to twenty twenty.
Move us to twenty twenty in terms of dollars. Our fund exceeds what they had projected for costs, so that's good. Whether that's still true, I don't know.
Not to jump all over the place here, but so approval of budget increases requested for library, museum, recycling. So I know like with the museum, again, I'm just bringing it up because it was brought up at the meetings I have too, right? So I was taking out some of those fixed costs like taxes and things like that. But at the end of the day, I mean, we, we budget or give the money and agree anyway, so is that something we'll just stick with and approve the budget of whatever the amount is and not take out those items or?
So some of these, I mean, the library, the KRC, the wellness center, I kind of see these as just more inflationary based on the wage jumps. The museum asked for a little bit more and I guess you being on the board, maybe you know what she's justifying there. I know she did run a deficit this year, so maybe she's just trying to accommodate and break even.
Yeah.
Recycling, I always kind of go both ways on this. I, I don't like that they have so much money from surplus that's sitting in their bank account. I'd like to see them budget a deficit so that they can eat some of that away, especially considering that we end up fronting money on capital anyway. So I don't know why she would need it otherwise, it's just, it's just walking around money at that point. That concerns me, I, whether that's something you want to deal with this year, I mean, it's been going on and breaking up every year, so. The, the infrastructure increases, or, sorry, the reserve allocation increases. I mean, I would love to see us put more money away, we talk about it all the time, the burden is on the taxpayer. It's always that fine line, did you save enough, could you have saved more? Was it worth it to ding them for the extra couple of points here? I don't know. It's always the first place they cut because you don't see the immediate result, right? It's, that's your long-term savings.
And then you're, you're less likely to see bigger jumps down the road, right?
But then you get those big questions where you're saying, hey, have you saved money for this? There's a big project coming, the answer is maybe no. I know with that lagoon, it would be nice to have a little cash in the bank, but we'll do what we have to do, I guess, at that point.
So, so how do we set that, in saying that we should put some money away? Is there anything in capital you think that we should forego for this year and? Put that money for the site?
There's not a lot of excess slack here, I, I don't want to pick favorites. A lot, a lot of the stuff you could pick off is the Pidley stuff and it's not going to be a huge effect anyway. And that's, that's the concern, right? You don't have a lot of big projects here that are already not at the approval and done stage where we're just waiting to cut a check. That sixteen, or one point six million is the biggest one. It's certainly more effective to do a big chunk at once.
Yeah.
We could scale back that project.
Andre's got a question.
So what would be our improvement projects this year? Like that we could do along the brine or paving?
Yeah, just to get that done, just for the, for the big one, man. The streets, streets are dependent.
Anything else?
A lot of just keeping things running projects here.
No, like I know there's a maintain business sort of thing, but the public are going to notice. But something that we're improving going beyond.
Not the library upgrades, library upgrades will look good, the arena floor repairs will look good when we get that done.
Yeah. Museum will look good?
Museum will look good if that one goes through, that one will be dependent on whether she gets her money or not.
Well, would we want to do that though, anyways, like it's our building, is that?
It's a big chunk of money that she wouldn't proceed with without, because she doesn't have the funds in her reserve to cover that.
Oh, I understand that, but where do we want to put money away? Because down the road, don't we need to do that whether she gets a grant or not?
Okay, so we, we do allocate to the reserve regardless, just not that much. And she's asking for a big chunk to spend instead pending approval, so it would come out of that reserve that we're allocating to. I think we'd put about ten thousand.
So, so, so if you didn't replace this two thousand nine ten of a hundred and seventy-five thousand, you decide to take that money and fix the museum?
Wrong reserve, so that, that comes out of the machinery replacement reserve, so for you to use that money for the museum, you would have to have a public.
I guess my question would be Graham is that if, and again, it's an understanding, we own the building, the brick needs to be fixed, right? And we don't get a grant, then what do we do? Just let the building fall down or do we, down the road, do we finally get to a point where we say, holy shit, we gotta fix this?
Is it imperative we fix it today?
Well, that's what I'm asking.
I do, I know.
For asking for it to be in a budget, I would think it's getting close to be important.
I think she would like to see it fixed and isn't there a study or something?
There is a study, I believe, three years ago or something, saying that it needs to be done, right?
Yeah.
And how much will it be?
Hundred and five, she's hoping to kick in sixty-three from other sources.
But if we had to pay for the whole shot like Andre's?
Hundred and five.
Hundred and five. And how much do we have in the reserve?
Um, not very much, no, yes.
Fourteen thousand.
Forty-two thousand.
But we only started saving into that reserve when I started. Now, we could, you could potentially again use maybe that, the CDI money for something like that. That would reflect a cultural use, I think that fits better than skip work. But, but I mean, you do have money coming in this year and maybe that would fit in there as well.
Well, certainly not, it's better to have it not deteriorate.
Well, we have to fix our building.
Yeah.
It's just whether we get a grant, do we pay at all?
Yeah.
I think we play it by ear for this year and then if it grabs fall through this year, then we're gonna have to look at doing something for sure.
The biggest thing is finding someone that can do the work.
Well, I know most of this is, there's no masons in town, there's nobody that can, that does that type of work.
Down the air next road, you have the money.
Yeah.
You have another one on your name?
Yeah, so being an ex-maintenance guy, the engineering study for the pool, what happens if we find a bunch of repairs? Do we have money to fix them?
Uh, probably not enough, we'll have to start looking at how we're going to fund them. I mean, we do have federal gas tax money, CDI money, we can maybe apportion some of that.
But some of Chris get the study done like ASAP and then the summer comes along and we've got a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of the repairs and then following year it's going to be two hundred and fifty because we don't do anything, what do we do?
We would take the money from somewhere, we would do the, we would do repairs.
We'd fix it.
We would, we wouldn't let it close.
I mean, the worst case scenario, if there was no money anywhere else, you could run a deficit and collect a fixed year.
Okay. Yeah, because we gotta look after it.
There's always more wrong than can be fixed, it's just what's the most wrong.
No, I realize that, but you also look at the impact that it's gonna have and when you go looking for something, you need to have a plan, actually, if you find something, what are you gonna do?
Always better to know the answers, yeah. Yeah, we, we certainly could hold off on replacing, you know, three quarter tons tandems. Will that cut into our operations? I mean, they're past their useful life, but we can always stretch the limits of usability.
So with, with the CDI money in terms of like the process to use it, so if all of a sudden, you know, oh, it's a good idea, you go, you go call, fill out a form, send it in, wait for approval? Or do you do the project and then sees it approved or what?
We just do it and then we report it and if they accept it.
Really?
I can certainly talk to them, that position has had some, they might change over, they don't like answering questions. Uh, you're, yeah, you, you don't feel the risk, you try and, you try and fit it as best you can. If it makes sense to us, maybe it'll make sense to them.
I'm just thinking another area where I think the community would, I mean, it would be able to, of those projects that we've done, like our walking path in certain sections are just, I mean, they're almost unwalkable with tree roots and everything else, sections that are not even there anymore. I mean, if we're getting a lot of, getting a lot of paving being done.
Yeah.
That would be, that would be something that, and that may even be a project that, on the, the community group, was it Rotary or Kinsman?
Rotary, Rotary.
Yeah, so that would be, I don't know, but to me, that would be, I know a lot of people would be like, wow.
For sure.
Yes, is, yeah, or something that the town council, mayor, town council, that's good and it's makes sense, a lot of people use that.
And to be honest, our recycler could do a lot of that stuff too.
Oh, yeah.
Or asphalt, we're saying, yeah.
Potentially, we could list a couple of tenders at the same time when we do the, the paving, separate them out into different projects and then when we talk to people, tell them that on all of them separately. Maybe that'll give us the opportunity to find something.
Well, generally, when you have a paving platform, the first box that comes out of it is knocked apart, like for construction, but you can still use it for walking paths and stuff and all that stuff too.
That's not done yet?
It is done.
Okay.
It is done.
Two trees grown up there.
This could be something we talk to the consultant about, with these paving projects, because he's got a lot to offer probably in terms of, and he could probably give us a better price estimate on what we're looking at.
Okay, so what else do you see we're lacking or not lacking out here as we move along? Graham?
I don't think, like I said, I don't think there's a lot of excess of things on there. I mean, the front steps could always be pulled off. It is the first thing you see.
I'd like to do the parts.
I, I agree. Critical? No. Is it a good impression? Yes.
If we don't care.
What else will they like with the front steps?
I, yeah, just, there's, there's not a ton on there. I know I've said in the past, I, I don't know about dumping an extra $15,000 of taxpayer money into the wellness equipment reserve. It makes sense, but it's not that he can't use it. It's just I don't like the source. That's all.
Can, can he not specify in his membership fees that a dollar of every membership fee goes to equipment?
And there is, there is. They just, they overbudget it every time. They, they seem to think they have $25,000 to spend, but we only collect 10 or 15 a year. Then it's been driving kind of to zero. Now it's at zero, so they still want to spend 25. And they, they've identified 25 of equipment they want to replace and they won't have the money.
It should be somewhat self-perpetuating.
You would think so, you know?
And if it means $2 more membership or $3, I'll pay it.
I think that would just be a change in the bylaw potentially, right? Because there is a Wellness Center Equipment Reserve bylaw. I think it's set. We can look at that and decide if it's incorrect. Maybe some changes need to be made. I don't know that anyone would argue that the fees at the Wellness Center are too low.
No.
But they are the only game in town too, so potentially.
Well, but they're, but they're comparable to other communities. They're a lot cheaper.
Yeah, okay. Well, maybe there's room to grow off then. I know there's certainly, we talked about those RM contributions. That would be something that potentially can help, whether they would agree to them or not. Yeah, I don't, I, like, there's not a lot of excess baggage on here. I cut off all the stuff that I thought, you know, we can live without this. I'm sure you've seen Sam and Chris's public works in. They had plans to do several road rules with the infrastructure under. I just don't see how it's possible with the Lagoon. I just, I'm not, it's, I took it right off. At this point, we need to focus on the things we can accomplish and then those will have to long-term planning.
Yeah. Okay, so do you have enough information to once again?
Yeah, if there's no other questions, everybody's comfortable with this. I'll just, I'll, I'll make my few changes and leave it as is. Again, at the last minute, we could probably pull something if it really wasn't something you wanted. Whether or not you want to keep that 100 and that 50 additional infrastructure reserve allocation or machine replacement.
That's included in the mill rate that you quartered?
Correct, yeah.
Personally, I think you should leave it.
Okay, so we can leave that in there for now and we can wait and see what the effect of the education levies is afterwards. Maybe that'll be something that changes your mind. So, move on from there. The grants, let's deal with that. This is the other big one. So, the grants. I updated it to include the 30,000 with the CDC. I pulled off the, the DMC 40 just for, to keep it clear. This is what's left. My edge, yours isn't.
Okay, and is this in the mill rate?
This is also all in the minority.
This is all in the minority?
It's all included, so.
Really?
Said, I did play a little bit of game trying to allocate it out better. It was always under general. I didn't think that was appropriate. Recycling really should be in waste disposal, so I played that out. I mean, we're dropping big time in what we're, we're kicking out because of that craft paper change. I mean, the biggest portions here are recycling and the library. The rest is fairly nominal.
So, for the recycling center, say the operating, so you get an updated amount of where they are. Can we just like not, can we just change it and take that out after the budget's done? And just reduce the amount if they, if they have a?
I think it, it causes problems with how they do their budgeting because they draw from three sources and it's based on that population. So, she sends out her budget and says, I need XXX, as you know, and if someone decides not to pay, I think that puts her in a weird position with the other funders.
Could we pull the capital?
The capital, I mean, historically, it doesn't get spent.
They should though. Channel, channel attached to this and so, they, they need to do lots of work out there.
But if they have 150 in the bank?
No, no, that's true, but like, yeah, they need another building. They need, they, they have to do something different. I guess they certainly do, but, yeah. But if they have that money in place, then what would be the reason to give them $3,000, $4,000 more? I don't know. What do you think?
No, for sure. Like, the discussion needs to be had. You know, they've been operating into positive cash flow for a number of years, which is, which is good. But now it's, maybe it's time to start drawing that down. I think that that's something that as counselor and member of the board, that I could advocate for that to, to go forward. You know, I just don't, I think with whatever decision we're making, we need to be sharing that with the other partners within the recycling center. So, I, I think pulling the rug out at this point in time, or not pulling the rug out, but, but changing, changing the rules of the game at this stage of the game without talking to our partners, I think, would be another prudent.
Do they contribute to capital too, Chad?
Yes, yeah.
All of them put in?
That's right. It's, oh, I don't know. It's, it's on a per capita basis, based on the last census numbers you remember, so. So, it's proportional share. We have the biggest share. Yeah, we have the biggest.
If they don't buy anything, they don't contribute.
Does that put in operating or is that?
It's in capital as well.
Okay, well, isn't sure.
Yeah.
Hey, Graham, what about, so the place branding's not a grant, right? That's just a bill?
The place branding, I have it in here as a bill, yeah.
Okay, and then what, what would that, oh, I've seen it now.
Strategic planning funding?
No, no, I was seeing that chaplaincy or I didn't know.
Chaplaincy is in there.
Yeah.
I assume we were getting the grant in, from the province to cover that. Whether we get it or not may change your decision on whether to provide that grant.
We have, we applied for that already, that grant. It's just a, it's a grant.
Randy was doing it and I think Jen took it over, so.
Where did, where did we, the scholarships, sorry?
Scholarships are, have historically been $6,500. I just left them in the same.
Doesn't say anything for 2019.
Yeah, it's the last one.
It's the last one, yeah, sorry.
Great, the bottom, true, yeah.
Yeah, I see where it is, but for 2019, it doesn't have, it.
Oh, yeah, but we're 2020. That's actuals. Sorry, I don't have any of the actuals in there because I'm not done by here end.
Okay, got it.
Yeah, I want to give you a bunch of false information for actuals.
Got it.
They're not the full 6,500.
Historically, they have been, yeah. Every once in a while, a student doesn't go to school and we end up not paying it out to her. I think I had one come back. The student quit halfway through and they paid me back.
You've seen it, maybe?
That could be, yeah, but historically, they do use them all up. As I said, not a lot of extra stuff on there as well. The ones that kind of are always questionable, the little ones, and then I just don't know that there's a lot of value in pulling those off.
Like the rut association? There's no value in making it go away?
It's, it's a very, very nominal.
There's no value in having it, but no value in taking it away?
We kind of cropped these a few years ago. There was a whole bunch of extra ones and we chopped them down because they were a bit of a draw.
And just a commentary, just, just to, just to add to it. Like, you heard Chad today announce that we approved two grants of $5,000 of the, there, as you guys seen, there's a whole list of stuff that the DMC has given to, that would have normally come to council before to get turned out. Right? So, it's nice to be able to approve some of those.
Yeah, approve some of those. Grants that keep the community running and keep, you know, keep things within our community, events that need to continue to happen that, you know, it's hard as town counselors to make those decisions, but it's a lot easier when you sit at destination marketing and put that hat on or you're trying to, you know, bring those events to life and help to, to create draws within the community, so.
Yeah, it's nice.
Yeah.
Got it.
All righty, folks. Any more questions on this one for tonight? Can Graham take it back one more time?
Yeah, before we do. Okay. The, the fire reserve, I projected a couple of alternatives for you there. Potentially, more money or less money depending on what you guys want to do. If we were to go ahead and include the fire hole expansion, I think it was 2021, 2022, and at the same time, keeping our equipment replacement for the trucks on schedule, we'd be looking at about a 75, or $78,000 draw annually. And I mean, we can assess this year by year. If we scrap the hall expansion, we did a new storage building out at the garage. It was $54,000 annually. If we do neither, it could be nothing. Depends how you want to look at this. I know Randy would very much like to see his hall expansion and he's advocated very strongly for it.
But that wouldn't be next year, right?
It wouldn't be this year. It's us putting money away or supplying for this so that we have enough money in his reserve fund to do these when we want to. Now, again, we can do this year by year. We can say, well, we're not convinced this year. We want to put away X dollars.
We, we had talked about the retainer agreements are outdated.
Yeah.
And there should be an increase in them, probably.
And that will affect this number as well.
So, if we, if we directed the retainer increase to the, to this?
Good luck, good luck. That's, that's a strong negotiation tactic. That's double what we've drawn now.
Perfect.
Well, I need a little bit of help.
Yeah, I need a little bit of help, yeah.
I think we'd say, I don't know, I don't feel like we're ready to make a decision on it at this point.
So, if he uses, if we give these 78s?
He's not using anything.
No, but so we, in terms of the reserve, what would be left if we, in the reserve, if we did the hall expansion for next year? And gave him what he wanted, what would be left?
I had those in the projections, but it was, if we were putting away 78,000 a year for the next 10 years, we were able to replace rails through the hall expansion. We could replace one of the pumpers, or the pumper and one of the fire trucks within that 10-year span and he had it listed by. And there was a bunch of littler projects that he had on the Goodyear radios and some of this stuff. So, that allowed us to do all the things we wanted to do. The 54 was everything there, but no hall expansion. The zero is just, we're just tread water. We'll see where we go.
Oh, so that doesn't even include the trucks?
It, it's just going to include what we're normally pulling now for that, you know, 40,000 of fees and.
That's what I mean, like, it's kind of.
We potentially should be looking at, at increasing the, the funding amount anyway.
Can we do the hall expansion by the time the hall is done? The truck will be five times the cost that we predicted and will need.
It'll be too big.
Well, yeah, that's why.
We'll need a flying truck.
I really think not, a flying truck. That's why we really need to look at these on an annual basis to see if what we're putting away, which is what we're expensing.
So, Graham, if you were to put the $78,000 away this year out of wherever?
Into the fire reserve, yeah.
Into the fire reserve.
You still need to prove we're spent.
Okay, so, so what does that change in the overall, the whole picture?
If we put it away, nothing, because that's what I have in there now. If we reduce that amount, potentially tax mill rate will down.
But our tax mill rate this year is not going to increase because everything is kosher, right? Right now?
Yeah, so, again, the way the capital works is you want to put the money away in advance. That's the, the effect on the mill rate. When we spend it, if there's money in the reserve, there is no actual effect on the mill rate, ideally. Now, if we start taking out debentures, we start paying for things with operating cash, those things affect the mill rate.
So, you've got the 78?
I've already got the 78 over there. So, potentially, there's room to maneuver that downwards.
Well, just keep it in mind.
Let's just keep it in mind.
Keep it, keep it in mind. Again, this could be one of those things where we get to the end. It's an easy place to pull from if that's where you want to go.
Yeah.
There is, as I said, there's a few questions for in council that have to do with staffing and that are going to affect the budget as well. So, I have as much as I can get out of this right now. That's certainly okay.
Good job.
Okay, so then we will hear from you again next council meeting?
Sure, next week or whatever you want. I did set the public hearing date. That's, I guess, another important thing to tell you guys. April 27th before your meeting. So, based on the dates, this is the latest we could go without you guys holding special meetings.
So, April 27th is the public hearing on the budget?
So, we'll have the public hearing, 5:30. You'll have your regular meeting where one reading would have to happen.
Yep.
And then on the May 11th, 11th beginning, I think, you could have your second reading and done.
We're good with that.
And if for some reason something goes wrong, you got enough time to call a special meeting and play a game there and try and still get it through. I, I just assumed you guys didn't want more budget meetings than necessary, so I hope to step them down a little bit.
That's what I'm here for.
Okay, is, so if we have one more meeting on the 23rd, is that going to be enough?
What, what more is going to change?
Okay, so the 23rd? Everybody's giving that, 23rd?
Oh, just at our next council.
The next council meeting. That's no special meeting.
23rd. You may not have your answers by then, just based on when the school stuff comes in. Maybe it might be the only thing that might be the thing that's hanging over your head. So, I guess if, if the results are different than anticipated, maybe you might have to have one more, just to talk it over.
Good, okay, so the 23rd it is. At council. Maybe, march, 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 march.
We're living in the future, Phil.
It's in your phone already. It's gonna be in there already.
Probably.
Council, it'll be there already. You need to show up.
Did you put it in the spot?
Jen would have sent something. It just won't say budget though.
That's it for the budget.
Great, thanks, Graham.
Okay, we have a couple of things in camera. Somebody resolve that.
Oh, I'm here. Oh! Result that we now move into, move ourselves into the in-camera portion of the committee as a whole with Mayor Jakes in the chair to discuss matters required our attention.
And there'll be no business coming out of it.